Good evening. I'd like to call the council meeting of Monday, June 5th, 2023 to order. If I can have our city clerk, please call the role.
Mayor Flores.
President.
Deputy Mayor Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Tharp.
Present.
And Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Diaz and Busquets absent tonight. May we have a call?
All rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of removing item 10 as the applicant has withdrawn this evening.
Second. I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so if you're keeping track at home, we are removing item 10. All right, so before I move on to the comments from the public for agenda items, I want to recognize two individuals that are here with us today. We have two summer interns. We have, to my right, your left, we have Lily Stewart. Thank you so much. So she's going to be here for the summer, and we also have Stiles Higgins to your right. So, Stiles, thank you. All right, so now we're moving on to comments from the public for agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, moving on to our special business. Our first item is a presentation, legislative update, and tonight we have the Honorable State Senator Bobby Powell, District 24, speaking to us. Welcome, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor Flores, and thank you to the entire Town Council of Green Acres. I am excited to be here with you all. I am your State Senator for District 24. This is my first time presenting before you. I usually present before every municipality that I represent after the legislative session, so I'm excited to be here before you tonight. I will tell you some of the good things that happened in Tallahassee. Hey Denise.
Hi, how are you?
All of the bad things, all of the bad things, and the indifferent. So, and I'll also be available to answer questions. We'll go through this rather quickly. Is this clicker here for me?
Yes.
I should have probably practiced this. Right, so a quick overview. I am in the Florida Senate. There are 40 senators in the legislature. Twenty-eight of them are Republican, 12 are Democrat. I am one of the Democrats. We as senators have unlimited bill slots. In the House, there's 120 state representatives. Currently, your state representative for Green Acres is Catherine Waldron. I've spoken to her today. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. We usually like to get together and do these updates together with my House colleague. My committee assignments this year were the Appropriations Committee on Criminal and Civil Justice, the Full Appropriations Committee, the Appropriations Committee on Transportation, Tourism and Economic Development, Banking and Insurance, Criminal Justice, Environment and Natural Resources, Ethics and Elections, the Select Committee on Resiliency, the Joint Committee on Public Counsel Oversight, and the Joint Legislative Budget Commission. Yes, I was really, really busy in Tallahassee this year. This is just some of the bills that we were able to introduce this year. My staff has highlighted the ones that we passed in red. They didn't know that, usually we like to show the stuff that was successful in green. But we passed legal instruments that created an update to some signature language as well as lean language when dealing with a mortgage. The abandonment and of historic cemeteries created an opportunity, well, creates the Historic Cemeteries Program within the Department of State Historical Resources Division that allows for historic cemeteries that have been abandoned or disregarded throughout the state to have a marker placed on them to, there's appropriations and funding to look for relatives or ancestors who may have been left from those cemeteries. And it also allows for a study through the University of South Florida for those particular cemeteries. We had the disposal of property, that's what the language is called, or the bill is called disposal of property. That is actually a really neat concept for all municipalities. It's groundbreaking. It should be called the Affordable Housing Surplus Lands Bill. Because what it does, it allows, it's Florida Department of Transportation, when they do road projects, they sometimes have surplus land that they did not use for the project. What we've done is allow for affordable housing to be created as a public purpose. So when FDOT has these lands, they can give it to the municipality or convey it to the municipality for free if it's going to be used for a public purpose. Generally, a public purpose would consist of a park or road or something that the municipality would use as a public purpose. We changed the language, changed the law, to make affordable housing now a public purpose. So if you have a project or a housing project that you want to use or create, and FDOT owns the land, FDOT can now give it to you or convey it to you without any cost. The people of Iran, as you know or may have heard, in Iran, there was Masa Amini, who was taken into custody by the morality police, and she died in the morality police's custody. I teamed up with Anna Eskamani in the Florida House, and we passed the Senate Memorial to let the people of Iran know that we in the state of Florida stand with them. I skipped over theft of nonprofit organizations. This particular legislation passed in the Senate, did not pass in the House. What that is, that did, it created an extra penalty for individuals who steal from nonprofit organizations. And then the Florida Museum of Black History. It creates a task force to study black history museums around the country and to look for the opportunity to create one in the state of Florida. This task force goes into effect now and ends in June, I'm sorry, July of 2024. It makes sure that if there's going to be a black history museum in the state of Florida, it's self-sustaining, and we have the resources to do so. And the area has not been picked out yet. That's been one of the questions that people have asked. But this task force that's appointed by the governor, the Senate President, and the Speaker of the House, as well as some input from the minority leader and the minority leader of the House and the Senate, will go around and make a decision and make decisions and study the ability to have a Florida Museum of Black History. Some of the other bills that we pushed forward, juris sanctions is important. That's something that we dealt with here a few years ago when a young man from Palm Beach County was jailed because he missed jury duty, temporary teacher certificates. The corporate practice of medicine was rather interesting, and the list kind of goes on and on. I show you that I have unlimited bill slots. This is just some of the bills that we filed this year. The ones that passed are in red, the ones that didn't were not highlighted. And then we had a number of other bills that didn't get a hearing in any of our committees. This is just a quick synopsis of the Abandoned Cemeteries Bill. I told you already what it does. I didn't get into what it requires. The Historic Cemeteries Program to research, identify, and record abandoned cemeteries with an emphasis on abandoned African-American cemeteries. Assist constituents, descendant communities, and state and federal agencies, as well as local governments and other stakeholders with inquiries relating to abandoned cemeteries. Here in Palm Beach County, there is one that used to be an abandoned cemetery, the Storm of 28 Site, Storm of 1928 Site, which is right off of Tamaran Avenue in West Palm Beach. This is the pre-trial detention for written threats. This bill did not pass on its own. It was actually an amendment that we filed to Senator Jonathan Martin's bill so that we could pass language that State Attorney Dave Ehrenberg wanted with regard to written threats. So it adds extortion to written threats, to kill as a dangerous crime for people who do this. They can't get out over, they have to at least spend a night in jail before, you know, being bonded out. Legal instruments, I talked a little bit about that. The disposal of property, this is what I talked about with the legislation amending Florida Statute 337.25 relating to the disposal of property. Once again, it creates a public use for property that is owned by the Florida Department of Transportation to convey that land to municipalities. This is the African-American museum bill. Told you a little bit more about Iran, theft from nonprofits, we talked about that. We jump right into the appropriations. We currently have $27,391,391,000 and $302,000 appropriated for our budget. This includes an additional $5 million for the Cox Science Center. Palm Beach County's Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative, $2.8 million. There's funding for Peanut Island in there with restoration of $750,000. Town of Mangonia Park repaving, $750,000. But what's really important is the City of Green Acres, $950,000 for the youth program. And then we've got the $600,000 for the Swain Boulevard Sewer Extension. Amongst other things, pretty close here, you've got funding for Palm Springs Police Department, another million dollars. But we're excited that these things are in the budget right now. The governor has until, I believe, June 30th to sign the budget or veto items. So let's continue to have our fingers crossed. And if you know anybody in the governor's office, make phone calls, tell them how important these things are to Green Acres. And I want to thank you all once again for those of you who came up to Tallahassee this year. It was extra important to see you and to have these conversations with my colleagues who are sometimes committee chairs, which makes my job a little bit easier when I go and say, "Hey, my friends in Green Acres, my area that I represent, these are items that they need, and I need them, so please leave them in the budget or put them in the budget, and I'll get out of your hair." Or I'll keep coming to your office over and over again every single day with my staff, which is what we are generally known to do. Major session issues. This is the part that becomes really important. Affordable housing. This is Senate Bill 102. This was the Live Local Act. It was aimed at making housing more affordable for workers. There's about $711 million to $800 million that's been added to the budget. You'll hear people say that the Sadowski funds were not swept this year, which is accurate to a point, right? But a few years ago, we created language that split those funds in half. So the portion that was not swept is, again, that portion that was split in half. But there was additional funding put in for ship and sale and additional funding put in for the, we call it the Heroes, I forget what it's called, the Heroes Act, which allows for another $100 million. Previously, you had to be a police officer or firefighter to get that funding. Now you have to work for a company that is based in Florida, so almost everyone would qualify for it. School boards. That was interesting. There's a lot of stuff that happened this year with school boards. One of the issues has been that term limits were applied last year. Term limits were created for school boards throughout the state to now be 12 years. This year, we had a supermajority in both the House and the Senate, and they determined that 12 years was too long. So that was reduced to eight years, although we haven't found out if 12 years works or not. Another thing that we did this year in the legislature is, so state senators and state representatives do not have to live in the district they represent until they're sworn in. School board members, on the other hand, had to live in the district that they are running for prior to being sworn in. The law was changed by the legislature, I did not vote for that, that will now force, that will now allow a person to be sworn in, to live in that district once they're sworn in. So this could create an opportunity for people who may want to school board shop or want to be elected to look for seats to run for, and if they win, then move into that area, which is problematic. So they can live anywhere in the state right now, and they can run for a school board seat here. And if they win, that's when they have to move into that particular area. Another thing that happened with school boards that's going to be up to us as people in the community to deal with is the opportunity for partisan school board elections. Most people, me included, are not looking forward to our school board representatives having to run as a Democrat or Republican. But the legislature thought that that was a good idea. I voted against it, but it will be on the ballot as a joint resolution. So this will be placed in the hands of the citizens in the state of Florida. It will have to pass by 60% of voters. So if you want to have partisan school board elections, then you will vote for that. Elections. This was another issue that we dealt with again this year. We've been dealing with elections every year. Of course, you know, when it comes to absentee or vote by mail, you have to re-register after every election cycle. This places additional restrictions on third-party registration organizations, additional fines. And it also, we had the opportunity this year in the legislature to create and write clarifying language that would allow for, I'm not going to say the governor only, but any individual who wants to run for president or vice president, who's currently elected, to run for that. So if I wanted to run, using me as an example, so that I'm not partisan. If I wanted to run for president and I'm not on the ballot in 2024, I could run for president without having to relinquish my Senate seat. If I were a governor in Florida, or a lieutenant governor, and I wanted to run for president or vice president, I could do so without relinquishing my seat. That was clarifying language that was passed this year in the legislature and signed rather quickly. Guns. No longer do you need a permit to carry guns in the state of Florida. You can now carry concealed, which was a far cry from what people wanted. Some people want to just open carry, and you now no longer need background checks. Immigration. This is interesting. So there are a lot of people who stood out in front of the courthouse. I saw this when I returned from Tallahassee. There was a nonpartisan group of people stood before the courthouse asking the governor to veto this piece of legislation. I will let you know that in Tallahassee, that was not a nonpartisan group of people who voted for and against it. It was party line. And what's interesting is today, I was watching a clip on the news, and one of the farmers, who is a legislator here in Florida, was telling his workers, or I don't know if it were his workers, or people who are maybe undocumented, that he does not want them to leave, that they were just pushing this language to scare people. It's problematic that you vote for things that are not in your best interest, and then you return to Palm Beach County, you return home, and go against your word. So those are some of the things that I have trouble with dealing with in Tallahassee. But nonetheless, this legislation passed and was immediately signed by the governor the day after a nonpartisan group of people asked him not to sign it. School vouchers. Everyone, everyone can now go to school and receive a voucher. If you breathe and you're attending school in the state of Florida, you are eligible for a voucher for up to $9,000. If your child already goes to private school, I have to look at the language to see how that child can get that voucher. But those children who are already going to private school, it's essentially a coupon. $9,000, of course, does not take care of many private schools. Here in Palm Beach County, some of the more, some of the upper-level private schools are $25,000 to $30,000 a year. And if you use this voucher, it would be a coupon to receive a portion of that funding off. Now, if you do send your child to a private school that costs $9,000 and that school closes, that student will then be able to go back to the public school, even if they've missed some time, and the public school has to accept them without the funding because that funding has followed that student to the private school. And state of Florida budget issues. This is the big issue, the big budget as a whole. The largest portion of our budget is generally healthcare. It's not highlighted here, but the education budget was $27.9 billion. $4.9 billion in the Department of Environmental Protection for some of the protection acts. Hurricane relief, $3.7 billion. You don't see it up here, but we put $12 million in reserves this year. There's also a budget, I'm sorry, $10 million, $10 billion in reserves. $12 million is used for the governor's lawsuits for individuals and entities that will sue the state of Florida. We also don't list it here, but there's funding that was put in place to, how do I say this diplomatically, deal with immigration in other states. So if we want to take planes from Florida and fly them into, I don't know, Texas, we've got the money to do it. We passed that in the budget. And all of us voted for the budget, so then, then everyone can say, "Well, you voted for it." Although, you vote for the budget because you've got a lot of items in it. $107.5 million for the Florida State Guard. That's, as you know, some members of the Florida State Guard are currently at the border in Texas, although this is Florida. And then $25 million for a new College of Florida for the operational enhancement. That was the new college board that was taken over by, that was taken over by the executive, taken over by the governor, and a new board was placed in. And then Richard Corcoran, who used to be the Secretary of Education in the state of Florida, former Speaker of the House, was replaced as president with a salary of $711 million. With that being said, that was our presentation. It was great. This is my staff, Diane Andre, who's sitting behind me. She is an attorney as well as the Chief of Staff in my office, who deals directly with most of the legislation and the appropriations. Ms. Michelle DeMarco, she is our press person. She is located in Tallahassee. And then Mr. Malcolm Summons, who is our Director of Media and Marketing, who you see right next to me. Our office number is 561-650-6880. We are located at 2715 North Australian Avenue, Suite 105. In Tallahassee, my office is located in the Capitol, 404 South Monroe, in the Senate Office Building. Our office number in Tallahassee, which Michelle DeMarco can pick up, is 850-487-5030. So it wasn't all bad. We got some money in the budget. We advocated, we fought a lot of issues. And we even, for a minute, we stopped woke when everybody got a message early in the morning through the emergency alert system. What else can I say? A life of service is the life that counts, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Senator Powell. Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Just a big thank you, Senator.
Absolutely. Yeah, on behalf of the City of Green Acres, we want to say thank you for the work that you've done on our behalf. It was a pleasure to meet with you and your staff when we were up in Tallahassee. And hopefully, by the end of the month, we will get some funding to some much-needed project in the city. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you all, and thank you for your hard work. And we'll get this budget money in, and then we'll go back at it again next year. Hopefully, next year, we don't have so many controversial issues. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You have a good one.
All right. So our next, next item is a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. If I can have our city clerk, please read the proclamation by title.
This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day and the City of Green Acres to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. Protecting public safety in our community is the city's highest responsibility, and the city encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. The City of Green Acres encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and honor our and value our human lives. Thank you, Green Acres.
Thank you. And tonight, to receive the proclamation, we have Kathy Valentine and her daughter. Want to come up?
Good evening. My name is Kathy DiPolito. I'm a volunteer with the Palm Beach County Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Our chapter here in Palm Beach County started in the spring of 2018, just two months after 17 people were brutally murdered at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, just a few miles down the road in Parkland. That same year, 2018, Green Acres was the first city in all of Palm Beach County to issue us a Wear Orange Proclamation in recognition of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. When I was first here in 2018, I shared a statistic that said an average of 96 Americans died every single day by gun. Today, that number has climbed from 96 per day to 119. That's a 24% increase in only five short years. We cannot let up on this issue because it's not going away. On behalf of all of our mothers and others, I would like to thank the City of Green Acres for your continued support and our third proclamation since 2018. We look forward to your continued support during the years to come. Thank you for having us.
All right, and our next order item, our next business item is another proclamation for Code Enforcement Officers Week, which is June 5th through the 9th. And if I can have our city clerk, please read the proclamation into the record.
Proclamation of the City, Council of the City of Green Acres recognizes June 5th through the 9th, 2023, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week. Code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinances. The Florida Association of Code Enforcement has declared the first week of June 5th through the 9th, 2023 to be set aside by local government to honor and recognize their code enforcement officers. Therefore, the City of Green Acres do hereby proclaim June 5th through the 9th, 2023, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, and encourage residents of Green Acres to join this council in expressing appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. Thank you.
And tonight, we have the Director of Development and Neighborhood Services Department, Denise Malone, here to receive the proclamation, and we have, all right, our code officers come up.
Thank you, Candy and Denise.
All right, and tonight, we're going to recognize, and actually, the Florida League of Cities is recognizing our Deputy Mayor, Peter Noble, for 25 years of service. Peter, thank you so much for, thank you so much for your leadership in the City of Green Acres. We couldn't be prouder of you, so thank you so much. I'll bring this up to you, and it's a proclamation. Do you have it? Do we want, okay. All right, so I'm going to bring it up. Thank you so much, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Peter.
Let's take a picture. Mr. Noble? After the meeting, we'd like to do a picture.
What?
Do a picture after the meeting.
Do you want to send it up and get a picture? Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Wow. Do you want to put it over on the seat for now? The empty seat next to me?
All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Noble, do you approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
All right, that motion is approved 3-0. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. The first item is Ornance 2023-06 First Reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ornaments by title. If I can have our city clerk, please read the, uh, ordinance by title.
Ornance 2023-06 First Reading, Amending the Future Land Use Map of the Future Land Use Element of the City's Comprehensive Plan to Change the Future Land Use Designation of One Parcel of Land Told in Approximately 4.993 Acres Located at 6645 Chickasaw Road From a City of Green Acres Designation Residential Medium Density to a City of Green Acres Designation of Residential High Density As Requested by Cutler &amp; Herring, Agent for the Owner MF Associates Green Acres Providing for Repel of Conflict In Ordinances Severability, Transmittal, Inclusion in the Comprehensive Plan and an Effective Date.
And presenting tonight is the Director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Denise Malone.
Thank you. Um, we'd like to start off first with the applicant presenting the item, followed by presentation with staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. Very good to see you all. For the record, my name is George Missimer with Cutler &amp; Herring, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Uh, just here to give a brief introduction to Jeannie Ducharme, a rising star in our company. She'll present the project. Um, but our applicant unfortunately could not, uh, be here tonight, property owner. He wanted, uh, to press one, one specific, um, issue at the beginning, more, more of a recap. This property has had several site plans approved over the years underneath the current zoning designation, uh, all of which have not proceeded into construction phase due to the extension of the adjacent right-of-way that's necessary for development of the property. It's a significant investment in, uh, property outside the, the current property boundaries that's necessary for development of the property that has hindered development in the past. So he just wanted me to pass that along, uh, to think about as, uh, Jeannie presents the rest of the project. So without further ado, Jeannie.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeannie Ducharme, Rick Cutler &amp; Herring. And tonight, I will be addressing items seven and eight on the agenda. It's the future land use and the rezoning of a project known as Garden Square. The applicant is MF Associates Green Acres. The traffic engineer of record is JFO Group. And the landscape architects and planners is Dawn Herring and myself, Jeannie Ducharme. Our request is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Residential High from the current residential medium and a zoning map, a zoning map amendment to residential high as well to, from the residential medium. The subject site is located just north of Chickasaw Road along the Jog Road Corridor. The site area is just under five acres. The existing land use is residential medium, which allows for seven dwelling units to the acre, which allows a total of 34 dwelling units. The proposed future land use would allow 10 units to the acre, and then it would allow 49 total dwelling units with a 15, uh, 15-unit difference. The future land use is compatible with the area. It is adjacent to other high residential uses. And along with the zoning district, it is also adjacent to other multifamily residential housing. So we feel it is compatible with the adjacent area. The request for residential high is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and it is consistent with the PBC level of service. Um, the approved residential medium is no longer appropriate for the subject site. Um, so as Mr. George Missimer had mentioned, that there's previous development orders in place, um, but they're going to be able to move forward due to the infrastructure cost of Chickasaw Road. And would also allow, um, the buffer between the higher density to lower density units adjacent to the site. This is Chickasaw Road today, where the subject site begins. As you see, um, that's where Chickasaw Road ends. Um, and it would need, it would be an obligation of the developer to further develop Chickasaw Road and provide the needed infrastructure. And the developer has also offered to provide landscaping along the canal as needed as an additional, um, expense. Um, this is a conceptual site plan. It does account for recreational activity and open space requirements, and of course, further development of Chickasaw Road. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, Denise Malone, uh, Director for the City of Green Acres. Uh, the item before you, as was just described, is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23-02, Ordnance The item included just a little bit of the site background. The site was annexed back in 2004. And subsequently, there was the Comprehensive Plan Amendment in 2004 for land use amendment from Palm Beach County Low Residential to the City Residential Medium Density. That was followed by a zoning change from Palm Beach County Agricultural Residential to a City Residential Medium RM2 zoning district. The zoning, uh, approval was conditioned to limit the density to 25 single-family units at that time. Following that, a site plan was approved for Macy Estates for those 25 single families. The project was never planted and development order expired. A revised site plan was submitted that was known as Sunset Springs. It was approved in March of 2022 for 25 single-family units. Uh, that also was not planted and didn't go forward with any permits being issued. Uh, the current request, as indicated, is a future land use map amendment from residential medium density to the residential high density. Uh, we went over the location of the site, the surrounding area, uh, within the City of Green Acres to the north and east, uh, also has the residential medium density. And then to the southeast is the residential low density within the city boundaries. Staff has conducted inland use analysis. There's compatibility, uh, with the areas to the north, south, east, and west. Additionally, concurrency has been met in regards to going forward with project zoning. Um, staff has indicated that there is consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, as well as the Regional Planning Council's, um, strategic regional planning, and as well as the, uh, Chapter 163 requirements regarding consistency with, with the Florida statute. Staff is recommending approval of the CPA 2302 and also the Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments recommended approval, uh, on May 11th, 2023. With that, staff concludes their presentation and will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Is there any comment or questions from the council? Councilmember, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Noble?
Yes, I have several comments negatively. I live next door. I'm in Park Point, and, uh, our development is medium residential. And I can tell you that it's still crowded in medium residential. Parking is not, is a problem. There are some areas where the parking is basically a street and the people that live there are parked on a, a road that goes right through the development. I do not think that Green Acres is ready for high-density residential. I, I think that's fine if you're in downtown area and you want to squeeze in, uh, areas because there's very limited space. I think we should stay with medium residential, certainly for the time being. And so I'm certainly going to vote for this issue.
You said you had a few points. Is that, is that it?
I'll leave it at that.
Are there any other comments or questions from the council?
Um, could I ask you to pull up the,
Councilmember Dugo.
I'm sorry. Can I ask you to pull up the schematic of the house, the site plan again?
It's the applicant's presentation.
The last slide?
The, yeah. That one.
And, and this is a conceptual site plan. Obviously, we're not here tonight talking about a site plan. And we would be more than happy to talk about any issues you might have with a, a higher density development. Just keep in mind, this is going from seven units an acre to 10. It's a relatively low increase in the number of, uh, potential units on the property. Um, this is a concept for a townhouse community that has garages, uh, a formal streetscape, excessive landscaping, great buffering, community amenities. It's, it's planned properly. Uh, again, we're not talking about a site plan tonight. We would love to be able to go into that more with you. This is simply the underlying land use and zoning necessary to make a development like this feasible. Uh, it's a great addition to your city. Um, and again, the townhouse community, it's not a high-density residential. Just keeping in mind, the zoning for high-density within Green Acres is only 10 units per the, per the acre, um, really not consistent with any urban community-type setting.
Any other questions from the council? Uh, Councilmember Tharp?
Thank you. Um, I think you touched on it. And again, I know we're, we're jumping ahead with the site plan, but everyone is seeing that the potentials and, and the potential negatives. So townhouses, townhouses, uh, townhouses, uh, looks like a driveway and parking garage for every unit.
Right, a garage and a driveway for every unit.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can I, can I do my, my question first? No.
Denied.
Um, so my question is more for, for our staff. I know that we, we are planning on doing, uh, some stuff on this road. Um, what's the timeline for that? And if we, if this project comes in, what's, what's going to be, where are they going to pick up from where we leave, leave off in that, that road?
Um, we're, we're looking to, we're actually, uh, waiting on an agreement from Palm Beach County staff at this point. Our attorney's waiting on that agreement so that we can move forward with the, uh, piping of that canal. And this would also, um, there is conversations and, and that, that, uh, with the development of this, that it could extend. And Lake Worth Drainage District, we have also had conversations with them as well. So.
And who's picking up that?
It would be, we've had conversations both that the city would do the extent of the entire Chickasaw Road, and that there would be some discussions with the developer, or that the developer would use our specs as approved by the Lake Worth Drainage District and, and then do it on theirs. That hasn't been, that hasn't been definitively decided yet, I don't believe.
Uh, feasibility on this, on this, uh, project. I mean, we've seen that it's, we've approved, uh, going from low to medium. It's died. What are you guys, is this, is this a project that's going to move forward? Is it a priority to you guys? Are you guys willing and ready to make this investment?
It's a very high priority. Our, our client, the property owner, is committed to bringing the site plan forward immediately upon, uh, this approval. And they've actually also invested in another portion of property that's not currently within Green Acres, that there is some desire to bring it into the Green Acres. It's actually located behind the ALDI here. It is, we are committed, our, our client is committed to bringing this forward. And, uh, this change really was necessary for the feasibility of the project. So, absolutely.
Okay, that's all my questions. Uh, Councilmember Dugo?
I'm going to make a motion to approve Ordnance 2023-06 First Reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Tharp. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed?
Opposed.
All right, that motion moves forward, two to one. Thank you so much. I know that, I think you guys are here for the next, uh, ordinance too. So moving on to Ornance 2023-07 First Reading. If I can have our city clerk, please, um, read the ordinance by title.
Ornance 2023-07 First Reading, Approving a Zoning Change and Official Zoning Map Amendment for a parcel of land told in approximately 4.993 acres located at 6645 Chickasaw Road From a City of Green Acres Designation of Residential Medium 2 to a City of Green Acres Designation of Residential High As Requested by the Petitioner Cutler &amp; Herring, Agent for the Owner MF Associates Green Acres LLC Providing for Changes to the Zoning Map, Repel of Conflict In Ordinances Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date.
And once again, we have the Director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Denise Malone, presenting.
Thank you. Um, as indicated, the item before you is, uh, ZC 2301 with Ordnance 2023-07. Uh, the site is located off of Chickasaw Road, uh, on the north side, uh, west of Jog. A little bit of site history, again, uh, since this is a separate item, I have to go through it a little bit more. Same repetitive, but, uh, the annexation of the site happened back in 2004 with CPA 0403. Land use was, um, adopted, followed by the, the zoning for a change from Palm Beach County Agriculture to residential medium. Zoning was conditioned to the 25 single-family units. Um, subsequently, the project was never planted or developed. So there was a revised site plan submitted, known as Sunset Springs, that was approved in 2022 for 25 single-family units, never planted nor permitted. Uh, the current zoning stands at residential medium. Uh, the applicant is looking to go to residential high, RH. Um, the surrounding area, um, again, indicates RM2, proposed for residential high. Um, based on the zoning code, the criterion findings of fact are that it's not contrary to the land use plan or adverse effect. Existing land use plan, uh, does not include any isolated district. Also, population and density pattern was met. Existing district patterns, amendment is necessary. Additionally, it does not affect public safety nor influence living conditions. Um, the existing zoning, uh, was addressed as to why the change was needed, and there are no special privileges. So all of the fine, criterion findings of fact have been met. Um, the zoning district does allow currently in the RM on the left, uh, column indicates that it currently includes single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, or duplexes, townhome developments, and other multifamily dwellings in terms of residential. And, uh, that will not change with the residential high. It actually, um, adds a couple other items such as cluster development and apartment projects, um, subject to some provisions. Staff is recommending approval of, uh, ZC 2301. Also, Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments recommended approval on May 11th, 2023. That concludes the presentation. Have any questions that you may have?
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the council? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Again, um, I do not look forward to approving a zoning change at this time. Uh, I think we should look to the future a little bit. Once that road is piped and finished, that's going to be a very high-premium road. And I don't know whether in the future, uh, some other use could be used for that, that area that would be better. So at this point, uh, I would, I am not going to approve any zoning change.
There any other comments or questions from the council? So it's, just to clarify, it's, it's all surrounding residential. I don't know what else could possibly go in there other than residential.
I don't either.
Am I correct about that?
It is correct. The surrounding areas are residential.
Right.
Difficult to.
Okay, just confirming. Um, any other comments or questions? No?
You not only have, if I may make a, you not only have residential, you have across the canal, which won't be a canal there, you have a trailer car, a trailer park, which is not the most desirable location at this point.
But, but it is residential. That's where people reside. All right, um, do I have a?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordnance 2023-07 on first reading.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion made by Councilmember Tharp, second by Councilmember Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed?
Opposed.
All right, that motion, uh, carries two to one. All right, moving on to item nine, Public hearing for Ornance 2023-08 First Reading. If I can have our, uh, city clerk, please read the, uh, ordinance by title.
Ornance 2023-08 First Reading, Amending the Comprehensive Plan More Specifically to Adopt a Multi-Future Land Use Designation in Its Entirely As Contained Herein Providing for Repel of Conflict In Ordinances, Providing for Severability, Providing for Transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity, Providing for Inclusion in the Comprehensive Plan, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. And once again, we have Denise Malone, uh, Director, presenting.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, the item before you is the creation of a new multiple land use, future land use designation. Uh, this designation is geared towards providing a mix of land uses, once, one of which would be required to be residential. And the provisions and emphasis will be on increased density associated with attainable housing. Um, the MLU, the multiple land use, known as MLU, designation would allow for the density and intensity of both the residential and non-residential uses to be determined over the entire site. Uh, would also allow for clustering of the residential to be on one portion of that site. The important thing in regards to that is that the designation, um, if created and is applied for and approved by the council to be put on a specific, uh, parcel, would be restricted to those areas and locations consistent with what is in the comprehensive plan as known as the primary activity centers. Um, it recognizes that only the residential component of that could extend possibly beyond the radius provided for in those primary activity centers. Um, the other part of the importance is the provision of attainable housing units. It's to provide for increases in density above what would be the base. It's to provide for increases in density above what would be the base of fifteen units per acre if this multiple land use designation is adopted. The maximum residential density permitted by the plan today is ten dwelling units per acre. So this would create a new future land use designation that could be applied for. The council would have to approve it for a particular site that beats the criteria, and it would allow for a base of fifteen units per acre. However, if you do provide for the twenty percent attainable housing, you could get an additional three dwelling units per acre, which would bring it up to a total of eighteen dwelling units per acre. Or if you provided twenty percent attainable units, you could get an additional three more to bring it to a total of twenty-one dwelling units per acre. Again, the idea behind this new multiple land use designation is to provide for emphasis on attainable housing. The amendment also would require incentives or performance measures to be provided. The comprehensive plan provides for some guidance regarding that. More direction would be provided with greater detail in the development of the zoning regulations that would be required and to be put in place to implement this designation if it's approved. So with that, we did go before the local planning agency, which is the Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments that acts as a local planning agency. They reviewed it on May eleventh. They did recommend to initiate the amendment with an approval of a five-to-zero vote. If it's the desire of the council, I could go through the actual language that you see with your staff report. The, it's, the changes to the future land use element, they are reflected by additions being provided as underlined text and deletions as strike-through. It's whatever the desire of the, the council is, I'd be happy to walk through those individual changes with you if, if that's what you desire.
Do, do the council want to, Director Malone to expand upon the presentation?
I just want to clarify. You say it requires a five-to-zero vote?
No, no, no.
The, the item as required is to go before the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals that acts as our local planning agency. As this item would be text that is being added to our comprehensive plan, it requires that, to go through that process. So it did go before them in May, and they recommended to initiate this amendment and recommended approval.
They, they voted five-zero. Do we want to have Director Malone expand? No? No? No?
No. I have a question.
All right, so we're moving on to comments or questions from the council. Councilmember Dugo.
So it's thirty-one, thirty-one miles of future annexation, or what we currently have?
The, you're talking about the potential locations that this could be in? So actually, in the current comprehensive plan, there is the map that calls for establishment of activity centers. That's on page, future land use element, page thirty-four as it exists today. And so we are recommending that this designation, newly created designation, if somebody did want to apply for that, that one of the criteria is that it would have to be within those primary activity centers. Again, we want it to be in an area that is conducive for this higher density and intensity, and also on areas like, that are easy to get to transit, you know, everything associated with putting forward attainable housing.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, I'll make a comment.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Since this is first reading, and we're going to have a second reading, and that will be the final, the second reading, and since we have two councilpersons absent, I'd like to research this a little further, so I'm not going to vote in favor of it for the moment.
Yes, I just want to, unlike, so this item requires review by the state. This is a text amendment that goes into the comprehensive plan, so this, if it is the desire of council to recommend approval, we would then transmit this amendment to the state Department of Economic Opportunity. They would review it for significance or comments regarding any state interest. Their review agencies would also provide comment. It would come back to us. We would need to address those, and then we would come forward for what would be a second adoption. So this process would take at least two to three months for us to be able to come back to you.
Thank you for explaining.
Just to clarify the, the process.
I got Councilmember No, Councilmember Tharp and Councilmember Dugo.
And to clarify, this isn't approving any specific project. This is just the game plan. Any project that wants to come in has to come in, apply, and be voted on by the council, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
They would have to request and be approved for a future land use map amendment to this designation.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Dugo?
That was pretty much my question. Thank you.
My, my question is, you've mentioned attainable housing a few times. In, in, how are we defining attainable housing here? By those, by what standards is, are we going to say yes or no this is attainable housing? Because as we see, the pricing continues to, to skyrocket, so I don't see salaries increasing, so I'm trying to understand what, what we are saying is attainable housing, what price level?
So we specifically didn't put that in, in the comprehensive plan. This time, the land development regulations, we would further define what we mean by that. Right now, we're looking at at least eighty percent AMI, average median income. Of course, that is based on what comes out with the index, you know, with Palm Beach County, but that is something that we want to further discuss and narrow down and put in our land development regulations, so it's specific as to what we're actually targeting.
I, I would like this board to discuss those topics, because I think we have to. When we're, when we're throwing a word out there, that's, it's going to impact future projects, we should define what those projects mean to people, so. I love the word attainable, attainable housing, but we really have to make it attainable, so. All right, there, am I, am I, is there a motion?
Can I just have a comment?
You can have a comment, yeah.
Based on what you said, is this premature to pass on the first reading?
No, I think there's work to...
Do we want more?
I think there's work to be done.
Work to be done on this.
Right, and then the land development regulations will be very specific as to not only what we mean by those items, but a lot of other items as well. In addition to providing attainable housing, we also have other incentives and things that would need to be provided, and those need to be worked out. This language is to give some guidance and a framework for this designation, but definitely those details we would want to highlight and have specific provisions in the land development regulations to further guide that.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
No public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So this is a public hearing. I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance twenty-two-three dash zero-eight. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-three-zero-eight, first reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so that motion carries two, one. All right, if you're keeping track at home, we removed item ten from today's agenda, so we're moving to discussion items. There are none for tonight. At this point in time, I'd like to open comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we're moving on to our city manager's report.
We got a...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Michael Barnett, committee commissioner for District Three. I don't have any comments, I just wanted to introduce myself and say I'm glad to be a very new resident of Green Acres, and I look forward to joining you at future council meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, Commissioner. All right, moving on to, are there anyone else? Did I miss anyone? No, okay. City manager's report, City Manager McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I just have a couple of items. Tomorrow evening, we are going to be holding a meeting at the Community Center at six-thirty PM regarding the Septic to Sewer Project that we will be beginning phase one of that project, so we will be meeting with the residents to talk about the entire plan for the area, what they can expect, how long we're anticipating it to take, and just go, answer any questions they may have. So that'll be tomorrow evening at six-thirty at the Community Center. Additionally, we will have a community conversation on the seventh at the Community Center. It is water safety. It's summertime, people are spending more time in the pool, at the beaches, so just making sure that people are safe when they're in the water. That's tomorrow, I mean, I'm sorry, that is the seventh from six-thirty to eight PM at the Community Center. And then I also wanted to recognize our youth programs as well, and if you see any of the staff from youth programs, please, you know, make sure you congratulate them. The city did receive reaccreditation through May of two thousand and twenty-seven. It is a big deal. The process takes almost a year to go through, and not everybody has an accredited after-school and summer camp program like the City of Green Acres, so we are very proud of it, and we're very proud of all the work that they do, so their accreditation has been reapproved through May of two thousand and twenty-seven. That's all I have.
Great news. Thank you, City Manager McHugh. Are there any comments or questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, moving, moving on to the city attorney's report, Attorney Torcivia.
Your report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's and city council's report, I'm going to start to my left, Councilmember Dugo.
Nothing, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Tharp?
Congratulations to our city's Green Acres Fire Rescue, first place in our first chili cook-off. PBSO was a strong second.
Okay, loser.
It was a great event, chief. Thank you so much for all your hard work. I, I know you guys had some challenges the morning of. I'm sure there's a requisition for a new refrigerator coming soon, but the chili was fantastic. It was also great to meet Negan. For those who don't know, Negan is our therapy dog. He visits Fire Rescue every Friday. Great pup. It was a great, great time to meet him, so thank you for arranging both those.
Excellent. And for the mayor's report, actually, I don't have a report for you guys today, so. With that being said, meeting adjourned.